Now live from the College of Kenya's Gymnasium, KSWR presents a premier evening, the historic inauguration of the city council of the new city of Santa Clarita. Now let's go to the floor for all the action. We now have the presentation of the colors. And the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me now in the pledge of allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Where do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have the implication with the Reverend William Hilton.
Would you please bow your heads and join in the spirit of prayer? Most gracious heavenly father, our hearts are filled with joy and gratitude as we gather together on this momentous occasion. Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to work together as one people, of one community, to build and maintain a quality of life that is indicative of the great country in which we live, and a clear reflection of the great constitution upon which that country stands. Father, we would ask that you would bless the leaders of this great community, particularly those who sit upon this city council. Father, we would ask that you would bless them so that every decision they make will be rooted in excellence. We ask that you would open their eyes so that in seeing they may see, and open their ears so that in hearing they may hear, that you would warm their hearts so that compassion and understanding may reign in every decision, and that as we as a community may stand behind and honor every of their decisions, and that we may hold them up so that diligence and courage will become their trademarks. Father, we ask that as a community we may unite in oneness, each caring one for the other, and that we may build to last not on weak and shifting sand, but on the strong, firm foundation of the truth. Father, this is my prayer, in your name we pray. Amen.
Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, our guests, please be seated. On the 3rd of November, we exercised our rights that are granted to us in a free society, and cast a ballot on the issue of cityhood. I would like to inform you that at 4:30 this afternoon, we officially and formally became the city of Santa Clarita. It's a rare privilege and certainly a pleasure for me to act as your presiding officer this evening, and in that capacity, it does me great honor to declare that the first city council meeting of the city of Santa Clarita will now come to order. Our new city council will now be given the oath of office by the Honorable Roger S. Moore, Associate Justice, Pelletport, State of California. And would the members of the immediate family of our newly elected city council, please join them at the front of the podium on the stage.
Elected members of the first city council of the city of Santa Clarita, please raise your right hand and be after me. I, Mr. Moore, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign, and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
And I would now open the nomination for the position of mayor.
I would like to nominate Howard Buck McKean for mayor of the city of Santa Clarita.
I would like to second the nomination.
We have a nomination, a second, for the position of mayor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? The vote is unanimous for our new mayor, Mr. Howard P. Buck McKean. I would now like to open the nomination for the position of mayor pro tem.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Janice Height for mayor pro tem.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second the nomination.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Janice Height for the position of mayor pro tem. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? So ordered. The vote is unanimous for Jan Height, Mayor Pro Tem. My part of the program has concluded. Buck, yours is about to begin. So it's with a tremendous amount of pleasure that I turn over to you the first meeting of the city council, the city of Santa Clarita, and with that, the new gavel. The gavel is handmade from a Santa Clarita Valley oak, a tree that was here when the Spanish were here, and I have been given unanimous assurance that they had nothing to do with the construction of this particular gavel. It is our hope that it will in truth signify strength, beauty, and endurance, creativity, and caring, and those are the qualities that you people have, and these will be the hallmarks of our new city. Ladies and gentlemen, our new mayor and my good friend, Mr. Buck McKean.
I hope this was made from a tree that was already cut down. I told some of my friends from the school that when Clyde left, I would probably just leave him, leave with him, after spending so much time together in the school board, it just kind of seems natural to just follow along in his footsteps. There are many people that we would like to thank here this evening. We would like to thank the formation committee, all those who contributed so many hours of volunteer donated service to make this possible. We would like to thank Mary Spring and the committee who put together this tremendous evening here for all of their efforts. Would like to thank those county officials who have helped to make this transition so smooth, and for their attendance here this evening. We would like to thank visiting dignitaries, other members of city councils who have come representing their cities this evening. We would especially like to thank all of you for your tremendous support throughout the election and by being here tonight. I don't think there's any snow out there yet, but we appreciate you being here. We have some special guests here with us that represent us in the state. Would like to turn the time to them at this time, Senator Ed Davis, our state senator from the 19th district.
I would like just to say that I've been at many impressive ceremonies, I've been honored at some of them. Nothing has thrilled me more or given me more goosebumps than this occasion here tonight, where as a garden variety citizen of Santa Clarita, I watched the birth of my city. I have never attended the birth of a city that I was a resident of. That's a rare occasion in probably most of our lives, and so it's really a wonderful thing, and we have put all of our trust in you five fathers and mothers of the city, and we're sure we're going to have a much more wonderful life to come. Now, here you have a senate bill that I had the honor of authoring, that is sort of like a magic lantern. If you rub it properly, it'll save hundreds of thousands of dollars. But there's one admonition that the genie told me when he gave this to me to give to you, that you must not sign your fire contract before January the 1st until that law goes into effect, and it could mean millions to you in the next three years, if you're going to annex around the surrounding territory rather rapidly. So Mayor McKean, I give you this magic lantern, may it serve you well. I don't normally let other politicians hitchhike on me, but this fellow is special. This is a letter from a young fellow who became mayor of San Diego, at a time when growth was absolutely rampant, when roads weren't being put in, schools weren't being put in, parks weren't being put in, sewer systems weren't being enlarged, when there wasn't adequate housing for police or fire services, and at that point in history, took a very, very unpopular position, that they all had to come together if he was going to have a good city of San Diego. And so this is a letter of congratulations to that great pioneer, a Republican who incurred the ire of a lot of Republicans and a lot of conservatives for the posture he took, but it was the posture of the future. So here's a letter of congratulations to our new city from our Senator Pete Wilson.
I present the office. We will learn how to rub that just, just right. Thank you. And now I would like to present our Assemblywoman, Kathy Wright, from the 37th district.
I want to tell you how very proud I am to be with you tonight. I have to tell you, this is my third birth. I was there when the city, I lived in Simi Valley, became a city. I saw my city of Solvang become a city, and now the Santa Clarita Valley, whose time has come. I want to say to the city council how very important your position is tonight, and will be for the future. You represent people, and that's quite a burden to carry, because it's a very tight and strong responsibility. I wish that you make few errors. I pray that you make wise decisions, and I also pray that you never forget that you can never be any wiser than the people you represent, because if you do, you'll lose the people you represent. With that, I'd like to give to your new mayor a plaque in remembrance. It's the seal of the state assembly. I want you to hang that in your first city hall.
We'll do that.
And really, if there's anything I can ever do for any of you, because I've all, I've been here, I would just be only too happy to help you, because I want to see Santa Clarita the very best. I think it will be a much bigger and better city than the city of Los Angeles, in the county of Los Angeles, and I wish you well.
Also, Bob Cochran, the representative from Congressman Moorehead's office, I can't see anything past these lights. Bob, were you there? See him?
Here he comes, here he comes. It's certainly a pleasure to be here, to participate in this momentous occasion this evening, to represent Congressman Moorehead, who is in Washington where Congress is currently in session, and to make this presentation on behalf of the Congressman and the House of Representatives, to wish the city of Santa Clarita best wishes and good luck as it moves forward and to the challenges ahead. Thank you very much, but allow me to participate.
We need a city hall, walls to put those things on.
I'm one of your new councilmen, Dennis Cooks. And I do want to reach out and touch you. When you leave here tonight, your job and my job will not be over. I expect that we will have volunteers, which we have always had in this valley. This valley is one of the richest places in the United States for volunteers, from scouting, to boys' club, to adult clubs, and we're going to tap that resource. We're going to ask you to join commissions, advisory groups, because we're brand spanking new, and we're going to use you to do your work.
I want to say very few words. I want to express first of all my pride in and love for all you people, and ask for two things. I want to ask that you have the patience to accept that years may be needed to resolve some of our problems, and the courage, please have the courage, to be part of the solution.
Good evening, citizens of Santa Clarita, and happy birthday. I would like to begin this evening by saying thank you to my marvelous husband and family, and the friends, neighbors, and people that I know in this community that helped support me and get me to this position this evening. Without more lengthy detail on that, I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for making the city possible and for helping me get there to share this platform this evening. When I began my campaign, I was overwhelmed with the idea that this was a new beginning for our city, and let me continue that thought tonight. As your chosen city council, we now have the opportunity to begin a new chapter in local government, a chance to forge ahead with new answers, to handle those problems with new solutions, and to serve you the best way we can. We must also deal with new problems and hopefully find expedient new solutions to those problems. Henry Kissinger once said, "We can no longer overwhelm our problems. We must master them with imagination, patience, and understanding." And to succeed in that, I feel we must plan purposefully, prepare prayerfully, proceed positively, and pursue persistently. I intend to do that. Citizens of Santa Clarita, join me this evening in helping us serve you in this community. Our new era of limitless opportunities, with your help, we can become the greatest city in the state, and I know we'll get there. We look forward to working with you and for you and for serving our community, but most of all, thank you for making this moment possible, this moment of a new beginning for Santa Clarita. I want you to repeat after me, Santa Clarita.
Santa Clarita.
It kind of rolls off the teeth real nice, doesn't it? The campaign for this city started with 25 candidates, 25 worthy people who trooped around to candidate nights and forums, who gave three-minute speeches, who gave their last bit of money in their campaign funds to support cityhood, and who indeed took the message to the people of this valley about cityhood. We were all amateurs, in every sense of the word. We were labeled that. I remember an article in the paper after one of our forums where a Harvard graduate was quoted as saying, "They're amateur politicians, they won't do anything for us." I guess we're supposed to interpret that to mean that real politicians do everything. But one of my favorite authors, I'd like to quote, has some feelings about amateurs, and that is Daniel Borstyn, who wrote The Explorers and who wrote an article for U.S. News &amp; World Report titled Democracy's Secret Virtue, and he says, "The amateur spirit is a distinctive virtue of democracy. Every year, as professions and bureaucracies increase in power, it becomes more difficult, yet more urgent, to keep that spirit alive. In a word, we need leaders with the customer's point of view." Amateur leaders are not yet bound by the cautiousness of bureaucracies, nor by the "will it play in peoria" attitude of veteran politicians. And that's why we will make our impact, simply because we are amateurs. And let me quote Borstyn again, "Aristocracies are governed by people born to govern. Totalitarian societies, by people who make ruling their profession. But our representative government must be led by people never born to lead, never born to govern, temporarily drawn from the community, and sooner or later sent back home. Democracy is governed by amateurs. The progress, perhaps even the survival, of our society depends on the vitality of the amateur spirit in the USA today and tomorrow." On November 3rd, this valley spoke with a resounding voice, a voice that said, "For better or for worse, we will decide. The people of this valley will decide our future." Tonight, the torch is passed to the new city of Santa Clarita. As we have passed torches from generation to generation, from runner to runner, this torch now passes from the county to the city. We are ready and we are eager to get on with it. The torch is well lighted, refueled by the goals and aspirations of this community, and it is well carried by the five people you have elected to your city council.
You can see that our training with those three-minute speeches was effective, we were able to keep within the time limits. In fact, I have a few extra minutes. Somewhere out in there, there's a bunch of McKeans, all of my family that are here. Could I ask them to stand? With a start like that, I was bound to get the most votes. I want to thank them for all of their support. Over 2,000 years ago, in the ancient city of Antioch, there was a young Jew by the name of Ben Hur, who had been falsely accused of a crime and was sentenced to hard labor at the oars of a Roman galley. All day long, he was chained to his bench. The galley oars were placed in his hands, and a Roman whip was placed over his head. When his companions were rebellious or revengeful, they brought down upon themselves the lashes of their Roman masters. But Ben Hur was not rebellious, and he asked only that he be alternated from one side of the ship to the other, so that his muscles might develop symmetrically. One day, there was a devastating shipwreck, and Ben Hur was able to save the life of the Roman Tribune, and his heroism and excellence won for him his freedom. Then came the day of the great chariot races, but as the race was about to begin, it was discovered that one span of horses was without a driver. In desperation, the aid of Ben Hur was sought, and a young ex-slave was begged to take the place of the missing driver. As he picked up the reins, a mighty cry went up from the onlookers, for never had they seen such mighty arms or such a powerful body. With great courage and confidence, Ben Hur drove the charging horses to a notable victory and won great fame for himself. There's an old axiom that points out that the Lord always fits the back to the burden, and frequently when nature wants to make us great, she gives us some difficulty to strengthen our muscles, or some deficiency to promote our resourcefulness. Such has been the case in our drive for cityhood. We have overcome obstacles and become stronger in the process. I hold here an acorn that fell from a tree in my yard. It's one of the thousands that fall every year. Who can count the obstacles in the path of an acorn to prevent it from becoming a mighty oak tree? Who can count the obstacles placed in the path of becoming a truly great city? One where we all may participate in the decisions that affect our daily lives. The number is not important, but rather how we react to them. I challenge each of us to react as did Ben Hur, or the mighty oak, and make obstacles growing experiences on the pathway to making this the greatest city in the world. Momentous events in the history are the result of polite influences, the personalities in a drama, an issue, or a crisis, and a timing that synchronizes these influences into an historically significant event. We are this evening participating in an historic event. This is the largest This is the largest city ever created in the state and probably the country. We are the 28th-largest city in the state out of 445 cities. The response of the people in this valley has been tremendous. We've been busy organizing, and have made great progress, but it's only a start. As Ken Dean, one of the candidates for city council, said in a letter to the Signal, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success." We will be successful with your help.
Now we return live to Calixton Canyon for the first meeting of the city of Santa Clarita.
Some other presentations that we would like to have at this time. I have down Santa Clarita Valley Historical Society, California Contract Cities Association, and the City of Artesia, City of West Hollywood, Westlake Village, City of Lancaster, and City of Agora Hills. I hope you haven't already left.
Mayor and members of the Santa Clarita City Council, the newly-formed City Council and City of Santa Clarita, it gives me a great pleasure to come before you this evening as the first vice president for the California Contract Cities Association. And on behalf of our president, Hal Kreutz, and the executive board, and the membership of the California Contract Cities, I'd like to present you with this plaque, which also has the seal of the California Contract Cities Association, and it's in recognition of your cityhood.
Thank you.
Along the... They've asked me to do a couple others, if I may. The other I have is on behalf of the City of Artesia, and it's in celebration of your incorporation and dated December 15, 1987. It's from the mayor and city council of the great city of Artesia. And of course, also wearing the other hat as the mayor pro tem of the city of Norwalk, formerly the largest city of Contract Cities Association, until at least 4:30 this afternoon. On behalf of our mayor, Peg Nelson, and our city council, we'd also like to congratulate you. The other, of course, coming from our newly-elected state senator, Cecil Lynn Green. On his behalf, also commend you for your actions and your city sisterhood. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Fran Pavly, and I'm representing the city of Agora Hills here, and the mayor of Agora Hills, Jack Koenig, is also here, our city manager and a member of the Calabasas This is my fourth time out to Santa Clarita. I came out for several incorporation forums, and I knew you could do it. I had confidence. Your perseverance, your effort, your enthusiasm was contagious. You overcome incredible adversity, and I salute your pride in your community, and I know you made the right decision. And we have for your city, from the 83rd city in L.A. County, a special plaque commemorating December 15 as your first day of incorporation, and we look forward to working with this city council. If we can help in any way, please let us know. We share so many things in common, the same state senator, same assembly person, both in the 5th district, and we're starting out with the same city manager, Mr. Beann. So I know you're in good hands. Good luck in the future. Thank you for inviting us.
Honorable mayor, I have here a beautiful proclamation from the 85th... You're the 85th, right? So it'll be the 84th city, West Hollywood, that wants this presented to you, and they wish you peace, prosperity, and health. And I would like Dennis Washburn to stand up if he please. He's one of the leaders in the cityhood committee for Calabasas, who is now running the same obstacle course that you ran, and we hope that soon we'll have an 86th city in this county, and we can go to their celebration too.
Honorable mayor, city council members, I'm Arnie Rodeo, mayor of the city of Lancaster, and I have here tonight with me Councilman Fred Hand. What better Christmas present for the citizens of Santa Clarita than the birth of a new city? I congratulate you. And I'm here tonight to present you with a flag that you can fly over your first city hall when you open it. We also have five mugs for the city council members. It's been a long time coming, but I can't think of a better thing than to see Santa Clarita incorporate. I've been waiting a long time for you to do it.
These mugs, don't let this meeting fool you. Most of them are going to last early hours of the morning, so that's to keep you awake with coffee in those mugs. Again, we want to thank you for your presence here and for the things that you've given. This is... Now we really need a big city hall to put all these things.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, let me add my congratulations to you and to the citizens of Santa Clarita on this very auspicious occasion. I want to first recite for the record that the notice of this meeting was newly posted in accordance with law, and your acting city manager also has an announcement for the record.
Mr. Mayor, I am pleased to be able to inform the city council that Mrs. Ruth Vannell of the Local Agency Formation Commission has handed me the certificate of completion and has advised me that it was duly and properly recorded this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is item 8, which is Resolution Number 87-1, entitled as follows. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Clarita Appointing the Interim City Clerk. A Motion to Adopt is in Order."
Move approval.
Any objections?
Hearing that's for order. Do we have to have a vote on that?
Yes, there should be a vote on that.
Okay. All in favor, please signify with the uplifted hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Unanimous approval.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask whether it is legally possible for us to move up the adoption of an ordinance which is scheduled for tomorrow night to this evening? The reason I make this request is that I understand that there are 30 oak trees located near 24046, which is slated for to be cut down tomorrow. 24046 Waldwood Canyon Road, New Hall.
Mr. Mayor, since this is a single special meeting, it is possible to move items on the agenda, although it has been noticed for tomorrow evening. It is a single meeting, and I believe the council can consider that at this time, or on this evening's agenda, if you wish to do so.
I would like to ask that the moratorium on cutting oak trees be moved to... Moved up on the agenda for consideration tonight. That would be...
87-10.
87-10.
Now he's making a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Yes, well, that can be an order of the chair if there's no objection.
What's everybody else? Would everybody like to hear that tonight?
I have a question. If that particular parcel or piece of property has a valid oak tree permit, does this affect that?
If there's a valid oak tree permit under the county ordinance, it would be governed by the terms of the county ordinance unless this ordinance is adopted.
This would supersede the county ordinance?
That's correct.
And the permitting? They already received their permit?
Yes, if the permit had not been pursued. In other words, if there is no vesting of rights in the permit. It would supersede a previous permit unexecuted by the applicant.
Let's first decide if we're going to discuss it tonight. Do you want to discuss it?
I believe what's in order right now is a second to the motion.
Do we have a second?
Carl made a motion. Do we have a second to discuss that? Move it to tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, then, should we move?
Do you want to move that to the next item then? Do you want to discuss that right now?
We certainly can.
Why don't we... Let's get our city council, our city attorney, and then move it down. Carl, if you would just put it a few steps down after we have our city attorney, city. Maybe move it to number...
10A.
That'd be fine. Okay, now we're on 10. Appointment of city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to dispense with the administration of the oath office for the city clerk. Or was the council going to proceed with that? Was the mayor going to administer that oath?
Do you administer?
I don't have a copy of the oath.
Can we do that tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to 10, the appointment of the city attorney.
Item 10 would be Resolution Number 87-2, entitled as follows. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Clarita Appointing the City Attorney. A Motion to Adopt is in Order."
Do we have a motion?
I move for Resolution 87-2 be adopted.
Do we have a second? Are there any objections? Being done, the resolution is adopted. Number 11, adoption of county ordinances. No, you want... We'll hit that 10A now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. 10A would be ordinance number 87-10. The ordinance is entitled as follows. "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Clarita Regulating the Cutting and Removal of Oak Trees and Providing for Its Adoption as an Urgency Measure." This requires four votes, a motion to waive further reading, and a motion to adopt is in order.
I move Resolution Number 87-10 be adopted.
Ordinance 87-10.
I'm sorry, ordinance 87-10.
Waive further reading and adopt.
I'm sorry. I move that further reading of ordinance 87-10 be waived and the ordinance adopted as an urgency ordinance.
Need a second to the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. Do we do this then?
Yes. It requires four affirmative votes, so it's appropriate.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Carl? You're in favor?
Yes.
I don't think you saw all of them.
I didn't. Going like this, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to raise the question of enforcement of this ordinance. I was advised by the city attorney before this evening's... I'm sorry, by the county attorney, county council, before this meeting began, that the county would not enforce the ordinance as our police power. Because we have not signed a contract with the county for any police powers, we can only assume that they will enforce those ordinances which were in effect beforehand.
Do you have any ideas then?
I'd like to ask if we might deputize someone to enforce the ordinance.
Let's change somebody to the trees.
Could you describe the information you received from the county council's office? And who provided that information?
Helen Parker explained to me that the county sheriffs would not enforce a city ordinance which had... Would not be enforced by the sheriff's department prior to the adoption of the ordinance. The Regional Planning Commission has previously come up with enforcement, but the Regional Planning Commission apparently does so by making a complaint after the act has been committed. Now, what's the use of passing an ordinance to save 30 oak trees if they're going to be cut down and then somebody's going to be slapped with a $100 fine? I think we've got to send somebody out there tomorrow morning to tell those construction workers to go home. That's why I don't believe that we should ask Regional Planning to enforce the ordinance, which undoubtedly they would do. I think we've got to deputize somebody and send them out there with the authority to tell those people to go home.
The city may employ an enforcement officer separate from the county to proceed with the enforcement of the ordinance. That would require separate action by the city.
Can we do that when it does not be agenda?
No, that could not be accomplished this evening. That would have to be by a separate action on a different agenda than this evening.
With proper three-day notice.
Yes, that's correct.
May we have a moment to confer on this?
Yes. As Mr. Beann pointed out, the city manager has the duty to enforce all ordinances of the city. You simply instruct the city manager to proceed with enforcement, and he carries out your desire by whatever means are necessary to carry that out.
Do we do that by motion?
Well, we just passed the ordinance. Actually, it's done by ordinance.
And he has the authority, so. Okay. Moving on to...
Item 11.
Item 11.
Yes. Item 11 is an ordinance entitled... Ordinance Number 87-1, entitled as follows. "An Ordinance of the City of Santa Clarita Adopting the Los Angeles County Code and Other Relevant Non-Codified Los Angeles County Ordinances as City Ordinances for a Period of 120 Days and Providing for Its Adoption as an Urgency Ordinance." This requires four affirmative votes for passage. A motion to waive further reading and adopt is in order.
Do we have a motion?
I move that further reading of the ordinance 87-1 be waived and the ordinance adopted as an urgency ordinance.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Are there any objections?
We should have a vote.
Please vote with the uplifted hand.
I vote.
It's unanimous. Number 12?
Item 12 is an ordinance Number 87-2, entitled as follows. "An Ordinance of the City of Santa Clarita Establishing the Santa Clarita Municipal Code and Enacting Titles 1, 2, and 3..." and enacting titles one, two, and three thereof relating to general provisions, administration, and personnel, and revenue and finance." Uh, this also, as an urgency ordinance, requires four affirmative votes. A motion to waive further reading and adopt is in order.
Do we have that motion?
I move Resolution number... No, that's ordinance, right?
Yes, this is ordinance. And if I may interrupt, Mr. Mayor, uh, just calling the attention of the council to one change in section two point oh, four point oh, one zero, uh, changes the regular meeting of the city council, uh, to be held on the second and fourth Thursday of each month.
Okay.
Uh, with that change, I move Resolution, ordinance number eighty-seven two for adoption.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Item thirteen. Appointment of interim city manager.
Yes, item thirteen is Resolution number eighty-seven dash three, a resolution entitled: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita appointing an interim city manager. A motion to adopt is in order."
Do we have motion?
I move Resolution number eighty-seven dash three to be adopted.
Second.
Are there any objections? Bearing none, so ordered.
Is there a, a vote on that?
Resolution?
Yes.
We need a vote on the resolution?
Right.
All in favor?
Five oh.
We need votes on, on both resolutions and ordinances?
Right.
Okay. Um, fourteen?
Yes, I, this is, uh, an agreement for the services of the city manager. Um, it is appropriate for the council to, uh, move approval of the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
I move approval of item fourteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh... Just one minute, please. I'm ready to continue.
Okay, all in favor? Very good. Uh, item fifteen, posting ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, item fifteen is Resolution number eighty-seven dash four, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita designating locations for posting of ordinances and/or resolutions required by law to be published or posted. A motion to adopt is in order."
I move to adopt Resolution eighty-seven four.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, number sixteen?
Item sixteen is Resolution number eighty-seven dash five, entitled as follows: "A resolution..."
Pardon me, for a minute. Maybe for information that, that the posting of these ordinances, that maybe we could read that as to the three places that we will be placing these, uh, the agendas.
Yes, if you wish, uh, the, uh, three public places would be, um, city, at the city hall, the U.S. Post Office, and the county sheriff's substation, all within the city of Santa Clarita.
Thank you.
Uh, Resolution eighty-seven dash five is entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita establishing an address for the receipt of United States mail. Motion to adopt is in order."
Do we have motion?
Uh, I have a question. The, the address, I believe, was originally to be on Solidad, was it not, the post office box? And I see Boque Canyon.
This is the temporary city hall address. Do you wish it to be?
Oh, is this, is this just the address or is it for mailing?
For mailing, the mailing address of the temporary city hall.
If we use the Solidad, we will not have to change it?
Yes, I thought we were going to continue with the box until we get our permanent, uh, location.
Whatever, uh...
Yes, why don't we, why don't we keep?
Okay, that would be, uh, the correct address then would be?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to inquire whether it would be easier for the city administration to pick up the mail daily at the box or simply file an address change? Which would be easier, to pick up the mail at the box for the next month or month and a half or file an address change?
The address change was based on the belief that the mail would be delivered to the city hall if it were sent to a post office address. If it's sent to the postal box, we have to pick it up. That's the only difference.
Is it easier for you to pick up the mail every day or is it easier for you to file an address change a month from now?
Well, without a full staff, it could represent a problem. It can be done. And I get the feeling from the comments of the council that they would desire the box to stay with the, um, postal address and we can comply with that.
It's my desire to do whatever is easiest.
We have to use up the stationery.
Well, we are, we're going to...
Yes, we have an address.
Uh, Mr. Councilman, we're going to be making several moves in the next, uh, couple of weeks and a couple of months. And I think, uh, we can go ahead and use the address that the council desires and then when we're in permanent quarters, uh, make a correction to the mailing address if it's then found to be desirable.
Would it be necessary then to amend the resolution with the correct address? And what, what is that address?
Somebody got a card on them?
I mean, the one on Solida?
I've got ears where.
The one on Solida. Oh.
There it is.
The correct address?
Let me just give it to him.
Is one nine four two five B, Solida Canyon Road, Suite one eighty-two. Is that correct?
I hope so.
Canyon country. Nine one three five one.
Okay, did we, we didn't have a motion?
No, with that correction, I'll move the Resolution number eighty-seven dash five to be adopted.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, number, uh, seventeen?
Yes, item seventeen is, uh, Resolution number eighty-seven dash five... Pardon me. Seventeen is Resolution number eighty-seven dash six, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita authorizing the mayor and interim city clerk to prepare, execute, and file the statement of boundary creation required by section five four nine zero zero of the government code of the state of California and ordering the utilization of the regular county assessment role. Uh, a motion to, uh, adopt is in order."
Do we have that motion?
I move Resolution number eighty-seven dash six be adopted.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Five oh?
Yes. Item eighteen is Resolution number eighty-seven dash seven, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita authorizing filing of documents with state and county offices and officers. A motion to adopt is in order."
Motion?
I move for Resolution number eighty-seven dash seven be adopted.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I have a question on that one.
Question?
Uh, this, this resolution specifically appoints the mayor and the interim, interim city clerk and the city attorney, uh, to do this filing. Is one of these people going to actually do the physical filing tomorrow?
Uh, no, uh, it would be, uh, a deputy, however, uh...
There's no difficulty in using a deputy.
That's right, this filing doesn't have to be accomplished by one of these officers.
Thank you.
Call a question. All in favor? Okay, number nineteen?
Item nineteen is, uh, an ordinance entitled, uh, ordinance number eighty-seven dash three, entitled as follows: "An ordinance of the city of Santa Clarita transferring assessment and tax collect, collection duties to the county of Los Angeles assessor and tax collector and providing for its adoption as an urgency ordinance. This ordinance requires four affirmative votes, a motion to waive further reading, and adopt would be in order."
And, uh, motion?
I, uh, move ordinance number eighty-seven dash three to be adopted.
Second, the motion.
Waive and adopt.
Oh, and waive the reading of the, uh, ordinance.
Joanne, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Five oh.
Number twenty?
Item twenty is, um, a Resolution eighty-seven dash eight, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita appointing an acting city treasurer. A motion to adopt is in order."
I move for adoption of Resolution eighty-seven dash eight.
I'll second the motion.
Question? Fred? We're not appointing a specific treasurer, just?
I did?
Yes.
Yeah, for the record, we were appointing, uh, Fred Bian.
As the interim.
As interim.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay.
Yes, item twenty-one, uh, is administration of the oath and we can defer that to later time.
Okay, twenty-two?
Item twenty-two is, uh, Resolution eighty-seven dash nine, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita approving and accepting surety bonds. A motion to adopt is in order."
Motion?
I move for adoption of ordinance, or Resolution number eighty-seven dash nine.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Okay, twenty-three?
Item twenty-three is a Resolution eighty-seven dash ten, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita approving and accepting insurance coverage."
Uh, motion to adopt is in order.
I move for adoption of Resolution number eighty-seven dash ten.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Question?
Uh, that's from Area Corporation? What's, what, what are the terms and amount of the premium?
What's the question? Terms, the term and the premium.
I take it that the term of the coverage is until, uh, until the next fiscal year?
Ah, affirmative. And the amount of the premium is still being calculated. It, it, I can say to the city council that will be less than that which was estimated by LAFCO.
Uh, Mr. Bian? The, are we covered as of the moment of passing this now?
Yes.
Yes, we have a binding of insurance.
We do have a binding?
Of ten million dollar coverage.
Ten million.
Oh, I beg your pardon, five million.
Five, yeah, five coming.
Five, yeah, five.
So, we got five now and five covered?
Yes.
And five will be in excess, um...
Any other questions?
Excess coverage.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, item twenty-four?
Item twenty-four is Resolution eighty-seven dash eleven, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita appointing certain county officials to serve as acting city officials. A motion to adopt is in order."
Do we have motion?
I move that Resolution number eighty-seven dash eleven be adopted.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, one question. Um, that, it might be useful. Is there a particular names that are going to be named?
No, uh, the offices are, uh, are designated, not to particular names.
All right. I thought maybe for the public's information as to the, uh, uh, maybe a, a rough statement as to each category, yes.
Okay, the offices affected are the district attorney of the county of Los Angeles is appointed the acting city prosecutor, the director of public works of the county is the acting city engineer, the road commissioner of the county is designated as the superintendent of, acting superintendent of streets, the county director of building and safety is, uh, designated acting director of building and safety for the city, the county direct, planning director is, uh, designated acting planning director, the sheriff of the city, the sheriff of the county is, uh, designated as acting chief of police, and the fire chief of the county is designated as the, uh, acting city fire chief. Those are the offices affected.
There was a specific person that we had, that was mentioned that we were going to be using in planning or we had not decided that?
That's a, that's a lay of some staff.
That's the difference.
That's a, that's a difference.
That's the difference.
That's your staff.
Not affected by this resolution.
All right.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor? Next item then is, uh, number twenty-five, establishment of petty cash fund?
Yes, uh, item twenty-five, and, uh, there's been a change in this resolution. The amount of the petty cash fund has been changed from five hundred dollars to one hundred dollars. With that change, the resolution is, uh, number eighty-seven dash twelve, entitled: "A resolution of the Santa Clarita city council establishing a petty cash fund. A motion to adopt is in order."
I move for adoption of eighty-seven dash twelve.
A second?
Uh, I'll second the resolution, but I have a question. Uh, we're going to be sending, sending someone to Sacramento tomorrow with some papers, uh, for the various state agencies, and now we have a petty cash fund of a hundred dollars. Uh...
That won't come out of petty cash.
How do we, with, without a budget, how do we, uh, establish the authorization to spend money on a trip to Sacramento? Which is absolutely, you know, which absolutely must be accomplished tomorrow.
It will be on faith that that will be repaid. Someone will advance the funds.
Good luck, Gil.
Uh, we had a motion. And do we have a second?
There was a second, I think.
You seconded it. All in favor? Okay, and then, uh, twenty-six?
Yes, item twenty-six is Resolution number eighty-seven dash thirteen, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita adopting a conflict of interest code applicable to the members of the city council pursuant to the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended. A motion to adopt is in order."
I move Resolution eighty-seven dash thirteen to be adopted.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. And number twenty-seven?
Yes, item twenty-seven is, uh, a Resolution number eighty-seven dash fourteen, entitled: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita requesting California highway control to continue to provide traffic enforcement within the city. A motion to adopt is in order."
Do we have motion?
I move for... Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Move the Resolution number eighty-seven dash fourteen be adopted?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, and number, uh, twenty-eight?
Yes, item twenty-eight is a Resolution number eighty-seven dash fifteen, entitled: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita requesting continuation of services by the county of Los Angeles. A motion to adopt is in order."
Do we have motion?
I move the Resolution number eighty-seven dash fifteen be adopted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, number twenty-nine, sales tax?
Yes, item twenty-nine is an ordinance, uh, ordinance number eighty-seven dash four, entitled as follows: "An ordinance imposing a sales and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and providing penalties for violations." And it's an urgency ordinance as well, requiring four affirmative votes, a motion to waive further reading and adopt is in order.
Do we have that motion?
I move that further reading of ordinance number eighty-seven dash four be waived and the ordinance adopted as an urgency ordinance.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Number thirty?
Item thirty is Resolution eighty-seven dash sixteen, entitled as follows: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita authorizing execution of an agreement with the State Board of Equalization regarding sales and use taxes. A motion to adopt is in order."
I move for adoption of Resolution eighty-seven dash sixteen. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. Those five oh? Five. Uh, thirty-one?
Yes, item thirty-one, uh, has a change in section one, uh, for the day of the week for preparation of, uh, agendas, the deadline, and that would be, uh, Thursday in place of Wednesday as is previously read. Uh, with that change, Resolution number eighty-seven dash seventeen is entitled: "A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita establishing a deadline for filing of items to be presented at regular city council meetings." Filing of Items to Be Presented at Regular City Council Meetings."
Motion to approve?
I move resolution number eighty-seven dash seventeen be adopted.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Uh, one question before we do that, please. Just for audience, that, that's one week prior to the councilmatic meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Five PM on Thursday prior to the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
One week.
So all in favor? Thank you. Next item, thirty-two, establishment of the transient occupancy tax.
Yes, this is an ordinance, uh, ordinance number eighty-seven dash five entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Santa Clarita Adopting the Transient Occupancy Tax and Providing for Its Adoption as an Urgency Ordinance." Uh, this ordinance requires four affirmative votes, a motion to waive further reading, and adopt is in order.
Again, for, uh, public, this is not a new tax. We're not imposing any new taxes here. Uh, this is just continuing a, a tax that the county was already charging.
At the same level.
Okay, that's an ordinance. Do we have a motion for approval? Waiver and approval? Waiver and approval?
Is Jen gonna do it?
I'll read. I move for waiver of the reading and approval of ordinance number eighty-seven dash five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Oh, yes, there you go.
Five. To review and approval of development projects approved by the county, uh, there may be a desire to, uh, continue this matter to the December sixteenth meeting.
I would, I would like that, uh-
I'll make a motion that we move it to the meeting on the sixteenth. Second, the motion.
Moved, seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Great. Okay, uh, number thirty-four.
Yes, item thirty-four is a resolution number eighty-seven dash eighteen entitled as follows. A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita approving the temporary location of city offices and business hours. A motion to adopt is in order.
I move for adoption of resolution eighty-seven dash eighteen.
Second?
No, discussion?
Second.
Okay, question?
Um, I just want to remind people that that will be at two six one 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 Bokeh Canyon Road from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Have a question?
Okay.
Call for the question.
All in favor? Five. Okay. Number thirty-five?
Yes, uh, this would be, uh, item thirty-five is a resolution eighty-seven dash nineteen entitled as follows. A resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Clarita providing for the enforcement of state laws and regulations relating to public health by the county health officer. Motion to adopt is in order.
I move for adoption of resolution eighty-seven dash nineteen.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Five. Thirty-six?
Item thirty-six is an ordinance, uh, ordinance number eighty-seven dash seven entitled as follows. An ordinance of the city of Santa Clarita prescribing imprisonment in the county jail for violations of city ordinances and declaring this ordinance to be an urgency measure. Uh, this ordinance requires a, uh, requires four affirmative votes of the council, a motion to waive further reading, and adopt is in order.
Motion?
I move that, uh, further reading of ordinance number eighty-seven dash seven be waived, and the ordinance adopted as an urgency ordinance.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Five. Okay, uh, thirty-seven?
Item thirty-seven is an ordinance number eighty-seven dash eight entitled as follows. An interim urgency ordinance of the city of Santa Clarita, California imposing a moratorium on certain real property within the city. This is, uh, an ordinance that requires a four vote, uh, four affirmative votes for adoption, and, uh, a motion to waive further reading and adopt is in order.
Ask a question. What, what, what property does this refer to? Is this the one designated uses are?
Properties within the agricultural, the county zoning agricultural classification of A two, heavy agricultural zone. And the uses that are permitted within that zone.
And this would be, uh, for a forty-five day period?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move, uh, uh, that a further reading of ordinance number eighty-seven point, uh, dash eight be waived, and the ordinance adopted as an urgency ordinance, but I do have some questions about it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, you say you have some questions?
Yes. Um... A two heavy agricultural zone, and, um, this would, this would effectively stop any major construction in such a zone, is that correct?
Uh, with certain exceptions, uh, any construction that has a vested right under a lawful issued, lawfully issued building permit, or any, uh, project for which, uh, a building permit is required if the work contemplated is, is estimated to be of a value of less than ten thousand dollars.
Would it be, um, unreasonable to ask what corporation might be inconvenienced by the passage of such an ordinance?
Um, any that propose a use in conflict with a moratorium.
In other words, it's, uh, not diplomatic to suggest that there might be a corporation that might be inconvenienced.
No, it's, uh, it's directed at a use by anyone that proposes such a use within-
Such as a steam plant.
That's one of the included uses.
But we have no idea of telling how many of these particular entities are involved.
Uh, we have not made a survey of all-
Right.
-potential uses within the zone, uh, that, that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Uh, item thirty-eight?
If the council is ready, is, uh, relates to approval of county service contracts. That is a resolution number eighty-seven dash twenty. Uh, I can read the title to the resolution, uh, if you wish. There is a staff recommendation, however, that this matter be referred to the city attorney.
So move.
Do we not, question, do we not have to, uh, move for its passage and then refer to committee or to attorney?
No, it isn't required.
So that takes care of the agenda that we had planned on for this evening.
Okay. It was moved and I'll second it. I don't know anybody who seconded it, did they?
No.
No.
Do you need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so it was moved and seconded?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor?
Referring you to-
Referring you stand.
You voted?
Mm-hmm. I'm standing.
Standing. Okay.
Um, the administration of votes, uh, of office, Mr. Mayor, the only, that's the only other business that I'm aware of, uh, on the agenda. Are you aware of any other?
No, sir. And we'll carry that over to tomorrow night?
Yes, that can be handled tomorrow evening. At this time, it would be appropriate for the council to adjourn this meeting to seven thirty PM, December sixteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, at Hart High School, two four eight two five New Hall Avenue, Santa Clarita.
Is that the Hart High School auditorium?
Yes, yes.
Just so the public knows.
I don't know if everyone heard that, but that concludes the, the, uh, business that we had scheduled for this evening. I think, uh-
Did we adjourn yet?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I, I think if you attend our meetings in the future, there won't be so much routine business. We will have more time to get down and, get down and dirty, get down and discuss some of these things, and we would appreciate, uh, your further attendance and participation. We really appreciate you being here this evening, so we will adjourn this meeting until seven thirty tomorrow evening at Hart High. I encourage you all to attend the reception over at Cal Arts.